I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:34. Is there any public comment? I didn't see anything in my emails.
I didn't have anything.
Thank you. Would someone care to please review our norms?
Got them. No, go ahead Scott or whoever.
As a board, we'll focus on student outcomes, be open-minded, respect each other, value different viewpoints, be responsive and responsible to our community, make decisions based on data and facts, listen to each other, be reflective, run meetings that are, that respect time, have concise agendas, are transparent, and follow Robert's rules.
Thank you Scott.
Sure.
We have our consent agenda, which is essentially the meeting minutes. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept them or go do an assent agenda or whatever it is, assent, yeah.
Thank you Michael. Cory?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Diane?
Yep.
Michael?
Yes.
Okay. Consent agenda approved. Moving on to you Randy.
Okay, so we've got a couple of items here. One of them is, so updating the personnel benefits. So Sue can talk a little bit more about this, but the update is including health insurance changes for, that begin on January 1st, 2021, for staff. So these are non-union and non-contracted employees. And it's due to the mandated statewide health insurance change. So the health insurance line is in addition to this matrix.
So everything else is the same basically from the last thing we've seen regarding this except for health insurance?
Correct, those are the only changes that were made. We predated it up a little bit more, but there's no, no material changes to it.
And, and just so you know, this is a statewide coverage plan and so it isn't as if you have any ability to change it.
Okay, but we still have to approve it anyways?
You do.
Okay.
Motion that we approve it.
Thank you Diane.
I'll second.
Thank you Michael. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Cory?
Yes, approved.
Scott?
Approved, yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Michael?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you, approved.
Okay, the next item is, there's an MOA for, for snow days to be remote this year. Give it, give it an opportunity for us to see how that goes, given the fact that our model lends itself well to this. So the teachers were in agreement that we would try it for one year and see how it worked out. So I'm asking you to approve this MOA and agree to sign it.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you Michael. Can I get a second?
A second.
Thank you Cory. Any discussion?
Can I just clarify, so when there's a snow day, the kids will be doing remote learning, is that what, that's us?
Correct, and so the teachers, it will still, it'll be a workday for them, right? Now that the agreement states pretty clearly that if there's no school due to inclement weather, it's a non-workday for teachers.
And they're all fine with this apparently, because they just...
They were, yep, then we discussed it, they've signed it, so.
And so they'll be able to work from home, so they won't have to travel to the building?
Correct.
Which is also predicated on the phone lines and et cetera all working.
Well, part of it is, because we're working out the details, I'm sure something will go out, I'm anticipating next week on this. But I'm, my, my plan at this point is to be able to call it the afternoon before, so that people are prepared, so it would happen when we know that there's a significant snow event coming. So that hopefully, it's not, people know and so kids and teachers are prepared for it. They'll have work to do, whether or not they have power or not.
Okay. If there's no more discussion?
Can I just ask another question? And I'm, I... Were any parents, I mean, is this just like, you're asking the teachers, but nobody has, has any parents been asked?
No. This is, this was an MOA between the teachers and the association and the boards.
Does it mean that they are necessarily remote learning days, or is it just the choices there?
Um, so, it, it means that we will be likely doing it whenever we can. Does it mean that they will all be that? No. We've still got, we didn't make any changes, when the state reduced the mandatory student days to 170, I didn't make any changes to the calendar yet to, to change that. So what that does is it, it offers us a little bit of flexibility around snow days and, and as we've talked about, potentially putting in parent-teacher conference day. And there will likely be days where the weather is unexpected in the morning and it may end up being a, a snow day per se versus something that was a little more predictable. There'll be, there'll be a little bit of, of wiggle room in it and that's why we're just trying it for one year to see how it goes.
It seems like the, the last two sentences in the, in the second paragraph, you know, are clear enough in terms of what the, what online instruction and learning schedule will be, will be maintained to the extent that connectivity and power allows, they'll remain student instruction days and won't alter the plan. So theoretically as well, you wouldn't be cutting into days at the far end of the school year to make up.
And that's what was, that's what was appealing, was the idea of, of having a more finite end date for everyone, especially this year.
Right. I, I hear your concerns Diane about parents and their ability to schedule their lives. I just, I think snow days are already kind of hard for parents to schedule and figure out. I don't know that this makes it that much better or worse.
I think it puts an undue burden on them to have to, you know, now we have to, you know, but I don't know, I'm, I'm not a parent, so.
Yeah, and I'm trying to think, I mean, I'm trying to think it through, to be fair, my kids are remote learning, so every day is, is this. And it, but before COVID, a snow day could throw a wrench in my schedule entirely. And I don't know that having them have to complete some stuff at home is that much worse, especially since everyone's sort of partially used to it on Wednesdays? I don't, I don't know that it is as much of a burden as maybe it used to be before all of this sort of set the stage.
There's a new norm in that way certainly. And people seem to be coping pretty well with a level of adversity that simply wasn't there before. And I mean, my personal feeling is that this would be constructive insofar as people seem reasonably acclimated and adaptable these days, like you're saying. And also, it doesn't keep stacking days on at the far end of the school year, which seems valuable.
I suppose, you know, if you're calling it in advance the day before, in some cases that could give parents more of an opportunity to plan for, you know, the snow day or the, you know, the kids that are going to be home versus what used to be the norm, you wouldn't find out till the morning of and you're scrambling and trying to figure the day out, so. I mean, it doesn't change the hardship of working parents, like if you have a snow day, there's a snow day and the kids are home. I mean, so it's just the difference is they're, they're going to have lessons on the computer or homework to do. So, I think it's a good point you raised Diane, but I don't...
You know, for me, it's like, I understand everything you're saying, but then it becomes, well, who's covering for the child? So we have to find the child's coverage and then are they going to be the ones that are then going to be trying to help that child, you know, to, to get into those remote pieces? And it just, you know, I mean, that's all, I, I just think that, you know, I can vote for it, but I, sometimes I think this is where I start to have a problem when, you know, it comes from the top down and the parents aren't asked or, you know, it's like, well, what are your thoughts? I just don't know if that's kind of thinking is something that I necessarily love. And I, I've probably, you know, mentioned that before, that... So, so yeah, try it for a year and see, but I think you have to find a way to get parents and the kids feedback and I haven't heard anybody mention any of those kinds of things.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't ask on this end of it. It was, let's see how it goes. There was so much unknown at the beginning of this year and there was so much information coming at people. And, you know, I'm sure you're, you're right, we could have surveyed kids and parents. It was a decision that we made not to. We'll see how this year's goes and, and take it from there. I'm, I'm confident at the end of this year, everyone will have an opinion about it. So we'll get a whole lot of information to inform next year.
Yeah, I mean, I guess if we're gonna see how a year goes, this is the year to do. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Michael?
Yes.
Diane?
I'll say yes, but under, you know, just being mindful of the discussions that, I, I guess, yes.
So yes, but you would like us to maybe think about this before next school year starts?
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Scott?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, approved.
Okay, thank you very much. So the next, the next agenda item is an FY21 year, year-to-date financials and that's what just came in. So Sue, since there are, since maybe not everybody has this, I wonder if it makes sense for you to do a, kind of a brief verbal overview? And again, I'll just remind you that kind of, we set this fall up so that last month you had FY20 year-end financials. Now you're, now you're experiencing FY21 anticipated in preparation for next month when you'll receive your first draft of FY22. So it's kind of to offer you the context within which we're operating, so. Sue, you ready to jump in?
I am, um, so.
May I point real quick?
Do you want to?
Do you guys want me to screen share it?
Oh, you could do that. Do you mind putting a camera on or would you rather not?
Are you talking to me?
Yes.
I apologize, I can't.
That's fine. I didn't know if you knew it was off.
Yes, I do know it's off.
Do you want Celeste to screen share?
That's up to everybody else, I'm happy to talk through it and you guys can all look at your, your documents or Celeste can share it, whatever you guys would prefer.
They're right there.
You've got it.
Diane, would you like it screen shared or is that not?
I, I don't have it, I don't have, if I'd gotten it, I could have sent it to Ron's iPad, but, so.
We didn't realize until the, right before the meeting started that it didn't come through, so it will.
So yes, Celeste, why don't you screen share?
I can listen and I can take, I take notes, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think there's, I'm not going to walk you through item by item. I want to give you just sort of the general overview. So, which is this write-up right here. So basically, we're anticipating a surplus right now at the end of the year of about 122,000. And so there's a couple of reasons for that. The main reason is we anticipated having a deficit at the end of last year of 157 and we raised that in the FY21 budget, right? That was included, we wanted to make up our deficit from FY20, the deficit that we were anticipating. When we ended the year, we ended the year with a deficit of $34,000, not 157. And of course, we still raised that 157, so that sort of automatically puts us in a surplus situation, even if our revenues and expenditures were exactly as we budgeted this year, we would be anticipating a surplus. So the next step of, of, you know, what we're anticipating for this year is we are anticipating having less in revenues and more in expenditures of about the same amount of money. We are anticipating less in expenditures mainly due to the reduction in staffing right now. So as you guys are aware, we did reduce one classroom teacher. We also reduced a parent educator position and both of those were through attrition. And in addition to that, we have one parent educator position that is currently on leave. So there's a little bit of a savings there. So with the staffing, the savings in staffing are offset by a reduction in anticipated revenues, which is partially due to not running the after-school program right now. So there's a, a little bit of reduction in revenues there. And in addition to that, we were anticipating a reduction in special ed reimbursement. The special ed reimbursement is sort of twofold. The reduction in parent educators means where we have a reduction in fed expenditures, so there's that side of it. We're also not providing the same level of special ed services at school right now than we would have if we were running a normal year where COVID was not happening. And in addition to that, we have a lot of our parent educators that might have been doing special ed services under a normal year are, you know, providing other functions, they're supporting health screenings, they're doing proctoring. So there's other things that our parent educators are doing that aren't necessarily, you know, the norm and they're certainly not special ed reimbursable. Now, it's still early, we don't really know where we're going to land. We could end up having additional savings in programs like the enrichment program. And after school right now, I'm estimating that at about a 50% run, right now we're not running the program. If we start up, I've included some anticipated costs for that, but we don't know whether or not after school is going to start at this point. So things are still a little bit up in the air for where we're going to land. The last piece of information is on the health benefits, which we briefly discussed earlier, that we're now going to be adhering to the new state contract, which goes into effect in January. And there could be some increased costs in staffing due to the contract. People haven't made their elections yet, we just started open season. And hopefully we'll have that information prior to you voting the FY22 budget.
Any questions for Sue?
She makes it sound easy.
That's good, that's good Diane.
So Sue, we haven't asked our current sixth graders where they're planning on going. That's always something we start collecting soon. But that, would that impact the amount of money per se that's in the budget for the secondary tuition?
Not, not what you're looking at right now, because right now you're just looking at anticipated. So that, that will impact what we prepare for the FY22 budget.
Right, this is still FY21.
Yep.
Are you hearing any, I mean, I don't know if I want to open this can of worms. Is everyone doing, I mean, are we doing okay? I'm hearing we're not providing the level of special ed as we normally would. Are families okay in this?
So I think when I talk about the same level of special education, it has to do with students not necessarily being in school, where we budgeted for a certain amount of parent support at a certain cost that isn't necess, isn't being provided simply because the student isn't there or because the students no longer need that level of support. I think Randy might better be able to speak to whether or not we're not providing certain special education services, but I don't believe there, from, from what I have seen and heard and that, that there, there's no level of support that's not being provided that needs to be provided, is that correct Randy?
Right, that's, that's my understanding as well. So, you know, the IEP teams are the ones who develop the IEP and determine the level of service. So families, we have some families who are staying completely remote. So the IEP team determines, you know, what kind of service will we put, provide under those conditions? How, how will we provide services? It might, for some families, it is pretty different than how it is if they're in, in person, but the families and the teams have agreed to those services. When they're in person, it's the, again, still the IEP team regardless of the, of the programming. So I would say that if you have a family or you're hearing about that, you should come back to the IEP team and parents are a required member of that. So I, I know that teams are working incredibly hard to provide appropriate services for kids and in some cases, it's more complicated right now than in others. Oh, anything that's in IEPs, we're providing.
Right.
So anything else on FY21? Julio, ready for me to move on?
Is everyone all set? Okay, yeah, I am.
Okay. So this next, this next agenda item is a, is a mandatory policy for you. It's a, it's a new Title IX policy, prevention of sexual harassment. As you can see, it is gigantically long.
It is.
It is far more procedure than it is actual policy. And it's a big deal, it's a very big deal. We have, Paul Eaton is our Title IX coordinator. We have a Title IX investigator, Tim Oliver. And the two of them and myself have probably attended over 10 hours of training on this topic. We also provided, had our attorney provide a two-and-a-half hour training on Title IX to all of our directors and principals, leaders in our system. So there is nothing you can change to it. It, but it's, it's a lot. If there's, i- if there's a, a report made, you're looking at an 80-day process, investigation process, a lot of detail. We're attending carefully to it. And I just want you to know that, you know, I'm certainly taking this very seriously. So this is the approval step. If you approve it, then you need to go through an adoption next month. So just, do you have that?
I have a quick question, is this written by VSB or who is, who is writing this?
So this was, uh, it was, it's the, the policy came from VSB. There is, I believe, a, a few attorneys in the state who worked on it together.
Okay, well, I feel like there's some, I feel like there's some typos that we should address before we do anything with this or I don't know if we can approve it and then get them to adjust those and adopt it or if we need to hit a pause button, but there's definitely some typos, but.
So if you, you know, it's up to you, you're not adopting it yet. So if you want to go through right now as a board at all the typos and sort of identify them, then you could probably send it to VSB for their input and see if they're gonna be, what they're gonna do, you know, over the next few weeks.
My point of view as a school board member would be, it would be the obligation of the FBA to do their own proofreading. I, you know, I didn't read it for typographical errors. I did flip through it enough to see that it was, you know, vastly complex realm of legal, you know, paralegal and professionals. And my point of view would be, if we, if, you know, I feel like doing the typographical stuff at this, at this meeting doesn't seem like a great use of our time.
I agree, I just, I mean, the most obvious error was on packet page 11 under 2A.
A second, let us get to 11. Is it page 11?
Packet page 11.
Okay, I went past it, sorry. Okay. And where? 2A?
2A.
Oh.
Actual knowledge.
Yeah. Um, I just, I didn't read every word of this entire thing. I scanned, I, I read a lot of the beginning and then as it became clear that there was a lot, 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 lot more, I did not keep reading every word. So I can't go through this and give you every typo, I just don't know that... I don't know what the answer is, but I do know that it needs...
Right, so I mean, I, we can, you can approve it or not. We can, I have Celeste email VSB and ask them, you know, let them know that you've identified typos in the document and that, you know, prior to formal adoption, you're requesting that those be fixed.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm fine with that, I just, I just...
You could also, maybe even to cover yourself right now, you could, you could acknowledge as a board that you're approving it, understanding that there are typos and that, you know, your approval is...
Pending.
Or it's, it's, it's understanding that those will be fixed, so that you don't have to go back and approve it once it has been fixed and start over again.
Okay. So we would make a motion along the lines of, we make a motion to approve this Title IX policy, pending typographical error correction by VSB?
Yes. And Celeste, you, you can, you can email VSB about that on behalf of the Metowee Board.
Okay. Can I get a motion regarding that?
Yeah, I'll take care of that.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion then, no, what's the motion?
Did someone make that motion? Can I get a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we accept this policy. And we are looking for the typos to be fixed before we actually approve it next month. That close, I wasn't sure.
Works for me.
Okay, good enough.
I thought you were saying to go ahead and prove, approve it, but it would, that, that approval was subject to the understanding that those typos would be corrected.
Right, that's what I just wrote down, motion to approve the policy contingent on corrections by VSB.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you Michael. Is there any further discussion?
Do we have to say which typos we want corrected right now, or?
I don't think you do.
I don't.
It's acknowledging you're in there.
What we're, what our role is. We're, I mean, we're kind of playing lawyer then, I mean.
Yeah, well, and it doesn't affect the meaning is my question.
I don't want to affect the meaning, I don't think, but I don't want to put up a policy on our website and out in our, in access by the public that has pretty obvious just errors. And I, I get that the VSB is probably very busy and has bigger fish to fry, but like...
Well, this is important though, you can't dismiss it. I, I think they need to clean the document up, period.
Right.
A note saying all typos are in the original document and not from the school district. On the, on the, if you put it up on the, if we put it up, we can just, you know, this is as determined by the VSB.
I mean, we have, we have the next meeting to adopt or not adopt, right? We can go back to the drawing board then, I'm fine with approving. The content of it, I mean, it's, it's a mandatory policy anyways in the con... And the content is important.
Right.
I just think it's important that it looks right. And the, it's important that it is right. Any further discussion? Okay, um, Cory?
Uh, yes.
Scott?
Uh, yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Michael?
Approved, yes.
Thank you. Approved. Moving on.
Okay, so the, um, the next agenda item is, um, you know, we, we submitted to you my superintendent report and. Brooke's principal report, and we wanted to give you an opportunity to ask any questions or touch base with us for a few minutes on what we share with you.
I, I had one question which was about the long distance learners, who you were supposed to know more about sometime in early November. And I wonder if that kind of played out, I, I'm looking for it in the packet, but uh, if that played out in terms of, um. You know, the real world, so to speak.
Um, so.
Am I, I, am I referring to one of your reports? I think I am, right?
Uh, yes. So in my report, I listed that um, Metowee had forty nine distance learners at the start of the year. Um, and eighteen that were returning uh in November. So they returned last week. So, um. Relatively high number came back from Metowee.
I was just curious about, and you know, how that. How that all played out. Yeah.
Um, do you mean like what the experience was for them transitioning back? Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Yeah, Brooke, do you want to take a minute to just sort of respond to what it, what was like last week in the beginning of?
Sure. I feel like the transition went really well. Um, our staff did a great job. Um, showing this new students our expectations of social distancing, wearing their mask, hand washing, all the parts that we are really important to keep them safe. And the kids were so excited to be back. Um, lots of smiles and it was so great to have them back in the routine. Um, and the parents were happy to have them back. So I would feel like all the staff members were, thought the process was smooth to, um, add more students. Every classroom had. New students that joined, um, and we're really eager, hoping that maybe in January we'll have more return. So I, I think it's been going very well for our students. They're happy to be with their friends, to be able to be outdoors. I really wanted to pull together a slideshow and share it with all of you, but lots of outdoor pictures, art is being taught outside P E. We had Mr. Harmon's classes um last week, bird watching. They had blinds up and it was wonderful to see the kids with binoculars checking out the birds. So I think a lot of kids are just engaged with their learning and socially and emotionally doing well since they've been back.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments about either of our reports?
I was a little curious about what the new process is, uh, what the issue is with cleaning. Disinfecting, are, are there concerns? Are there concerns about safety or are they just sort of concerns about?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't think so. I think, you know, it's, it's hard because I think there's lots of different things. We're updating everything right now. We're finalizing a new document where we synthesized. With all the new guidance, the strong and healthy start guidance, there was additional information details added. So I think the concern is just making sure that people want to know that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. The clarity around what's my responsibility, what's a custodian, I don't want to, I don't want to not be doing something I should be. So we're, we've got a document that's just about done. I had it reviewed by a few key people this morning. Um, I think we got clarity on things, so I expect it, it'll probably not go out till Thursday or Friday. Um, given what my calendar looks like the next couple of days, but it'll be out this week and I think people will feel uh more comfortable once they see it.
Okay.
Our custodians are definitely working very, very hard. You know, I think it's everyone, this is obviously a whole new tur- new terrain for everyone. But I have, you know, often thought that our custodial staff tend to be more behind the scenes in general at our schools. Uh, things rapidly shifted this year and they're much more front and centered. People are, are watching what they're doing much more carefully and. And uh, their work has a very different meaning than it has ever in the past. Um, I'm working really hard with Greg Harrington to make sure that our custodians. Understand what their responsibilities are, that we have common understanding of practices. Um, when there's, uh, when. There's differing of perspective or understanding, we're getting it addressed immediately. So, um, I, I don't, I think people are working really hard and doing a good job.
Are we having, um, I assume there's gonna just like be restrictions around travel? Is your thoughts with the holiday thinking?
Yes, um, there are restrictions now. Those are, are, uh, we are expecting them to be in for, will be enforcing them. We're expecting people to. Follow them. Principals are sending communication out to families around travel. We are communicating weekly with staff around travel. Um, so, you know, we expect people to be following the guidance. Uh, best case scenario is people stay home. I think. Many of us look around and realize that, um, this is an opportunity for some, a twenty twenty uh changes to Thanksgiving. Staying home is probably the best and safest thing for everyone.
Well, I wholeheartedly agree. I just didn't know if there were options for families that are traveling to like be remote learners for a small period or.
They, that exists all the time right now. So people are quarantining. We have kids quarantining all the time throughout our system. Our system is designed to allow for that. So, uh, so students, for whatever reason, need to quarantine, they can. And we will fully be expecting all families who travel to follow the, any quarantine guidance that's required when they come back. Um, I, I would expect that after Thanksgiving that there'll be a higher number of students. Uh, in remote instruction for, you know, whatever it is, ten to fourteen days after the holiday. I think we should all expect that.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions?
Okay. All right, um, so, um, so the next. Uh, based on our meeting before, we included a policy governance activity. I'm looking at, at you. Everyone's looking a little tired. I could be wrong. You might not all be tired. You might just look a little tired. Um, but, uh, so if you look in your packet. Um, I included, we went through, um, Celeste and I went through the activities that you had done last year. And, um, it, as well as, uh, activities that we had from other protocols. So I included one in here. Um, and so I guess the agenda item is, is going through this activity. Um, uh, I guess it could start with, do you want to go through the activity? Um, uh, Julie, I'm not entirely sure how you would like to approach this, um, but it's here and you can certainly go through it, uh, if you'd like to.
Well, did everyone have an opportunity to review?
I have looked at it, but I haven't like put a ton of time into it. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I'm same thing. And I actually, so what we, the hard part for me was I had to go and find, there was, um. I don't even have the date on it, but. There, yeah, it was the beginning of twenty twenty was, um. A meeting, our meeting in January where I pulled the draft policy governance policies from Metowee. That's what we used when we reviewed these.
Yeah, I know. This is what I pulled, so I don't know, but it doesn't have a date. Let me see.
Cause we have our, we don't have official policies.
Right.
That would work for this activity.
The, the draft ones, I think are the ones that you've used in the past.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I just didn't know if everyone else was able to pull those.
Well, I, this is what I have. I have no idea if it's the right little baby, but it's a draft Metowee government policy. I've got it all marked up from what I've done in the past, so.
I think that's the one.
And that's what I found.
You've got like a list of executive limitation policies and then board management.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All over from when I've used it in the past.
So is everyone okay then with going through this?
Well, this doesn't take long.
You don't fall asleep.
Cory, do you have a copy of these? You're on mute.
Oh, uh, I, I think Celeste sent them to me, but I don't have them put out. She did send them, um.
Probably nothing else. It's good discussion. If you work it through with us, you know, just.
Right, so there's a couple of different ways you can do this. Typically, if we were in person, you would e- each individually read through and. Look at the policies and kind of answer it. It's just, it's a, it's an individual process. And then you come back together and you discuss it together as a group. Um, you can, uh, that is certainly one option. We could do it here. We could pause the recording, give everybody, you know, ten minutes or so to. Read through it and jot down some notes and come back together. The alternative is to uh just work through it together as a group right now. Um, and discuss it and, um, and I, you know, I don't know that it necessarily requires a, a high level of facilitation. The questions, um, uh, the, 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 the questions kind of guide you through the process. So I think either way is really appropriate. Um, and I think it's worth it to spend a minute or two talking about. Which approach you'd like to take and then, and then diving into it.
Well, personally, I would love to do it in a collective way. Um, I do have the, the paperwork. Um, I'm just finding a lot of this stuff. Baffling. So doing it, um, en- en masse, I feel would be helpful thing. Um, but of course, whatever the, the majority decides is best is what we'll do.
Okay.
I would agree with that.
I would too.
All right, we'll just talk it through.
Yeah.
Okay. So the scenario is a school board is aware that the CEO is about to reduce the number of kindergarten hours that will be offered. It knows that some parents will be unhappy with this decision. What should the board do? And so the first question is, um, what has the board already said in its relevant policies? The first area being ends.
Right.
So you would look through each of these areas and identify, um, you know, which, which addresses something related to this already you've gotten.
Um, I mean, so in looking and reviewing these policies and the ends policies, there's not really anything that's super specific about this. Um. You know. The one point zero is that we will educate students to be self-directed, healthy, self-fulfilled people and active civic-minded citizens of the world. We will achieve this at a cost reasonably comparable to other B R S U schools of similar size. Um, I see that potentially being an area where if we're eliminating, um. I mean, if we're, we're vastly off from other schools that aren't eliminating hours, that could potentially be an issue. I didn't really see much else under ends.
I think you're right. I think don't read too much into it. You know, ends isn't, it, the ends policies are likely not going to be.
Yeah.
Right.
So the next section was executive limitations. Which starts at two point oh.
Seems like that applies kind of because it's talking about. Respect, respect to interactions with students, parents, guardians, you know, that. Uh, shall not cause or allow conditions, procedures, or decisions that are untimely, unclear, undignified, or unnecessary, or intrusive. So. Am I understanding that right? Like if you all of a sudden change the hours and it was a hardship, I mean. That, it seems like that's. Kind of touching on that, but. To change, yeah.
Go ahead.
No, you got it.
Fun, yeah.
What, what Diane?
Well, I just am looking under that two one also, and I'm looking at, um, you know, I, I guess I, the communication word. A system of communication between, and those parents, that parent group comes back up. Um. Input on significant decisions is number eight. And I guess I think that sometimes one of the things that bothers me about policy is that I just. I'm, I'm just not convinced that parents have enough input. Um, that it's always in hindsight. I will get the data later. Um. So, so that.
I'm not understanding what you mean, that they don't have enough input.
I get what she means.
That the decision, that the CEO is going to decide to cut back kindergarten days or whatever the scenario is and, um, so. The decision is coming from the top down without thinking about what people in the community, if we have stakeholders, I would think that you would want to. Make an attempt more consistently or something to them. Saying, what are your thoughts on this? That it shouldn't be done and then say, how did it go? It should be done, like, we're thinking of doing this. What are your thoughts? What, you know, could you, um. So, so that's what I'm thinking. I, I may not be able to articulate that enough, Michael, but I feel like seven, eight, and nine in that area is something that, for me, I always go, oh.
So you're talking about two point one, seven, eight, and nine, right?
Yep.
We don't know by this scenario whether any of that has or hasn't been done, right? It doesn't tell us, we don't have any information about what. Led up to this decision or how it was executed, but as you're talking about, hey. This is happening. One of the executive limitations is that we do expect there to be a level of communication through this process.
Right.
So those, so, so I hear you saying two point one addresses. Um, potentially, uh, it could be one of the, um, policies that is, uh, directly addresses this issue.
For me, because if Scott's gonna say, you know, untimely, unclear, I, I don't know, for me, yes, that's what I'm saying, Randy. I just think that. You know. I, I guess I just, I need to know that the community is being heard. That's it for me. I'm so right there that that's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, I mean, this scenario isn't clear. This is like, are we, are we midstream and we're reducing hours or is this like. At an April meeting and we say, in September, we're reducing the number of kindergarten hours.
Right, and all you're doing is looking for any policies that address something related to this. So it's an exercise in seeing, trying to determine, is this covered by policy governance and how and where? So I think that, you know, Diane brought up one that was clear, right? That, that could be, but we don't know, but that, that covers it.
Right.
And, um, two point eight probably does as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, along the exact same lines.
Yeah, I had two point eight, three, and. Yeah, I had two point eight, three, and four, I mean, four-ish, right? Because media coverage, we could really even consider just like getting blasted on Facebook by parents.
So are you saying two point eight, not two point, okay, communications port to the board. Okay, I hadn't gotten that far.
And also moderate, monitoring data. I mean, if this is a decision that's being made, it should be being made on some basis of fact.
And that's, that's, you know, you want to know, you want to go into, and I just think that in my you're, you, you can't, you have to be able to do that. If you want to be transparent, if you want to have the community that's going to support your school, if you want to have feedback and go on database-driven things, then we need to have the data that says parents are not going to mind if we do this and this and this.
But if I'm understanding this, the, the purpose of this a little better as we're having this conversation, the part of this scenario is putting on us, um, the fact that the C, the CEO, and let's, can't we just pick a choice that would sort of make it impersonal, like budgetarily speaking, we are in a stuck position and the number of kindergarten hours has to be reduced. Um, might that be something that would, y- you know, be a decision that, I guess what I'm wondering is, is decision like that, is there the possibility that it could take place beyond the level of where the local school board has any control over that, and we just have to be, so to speak, the sort of, uh, um, messengers of the bad news? Does that, does that, I, I'm just asking if, is that how the, eh, what, what the kind of exercise is predicated on?
Right.
Bad news, we don't know, you know, w- we can't control the fact that we're getting it, we've gotten it, and now we is that?
Yeah, so I, I think, Michael, you're on exactly the right track. The question is, who makes the unpopular choices? And so, so the exercise is, is designed to help you as a board to see, okay, in a situation like this, where really, uh, wh- what is your role as a board and what is the CEO's or superintendent's role in, in the work? And so by identifying at this stage, what are the relevant policies? And then working through the rest of the questions, you figure out, and Diane, I think this is a great exercise because, um, because, you know, you've shared, and, and, you know, it's, it's coming up again for you. Um, what is the board's role and what is the superintendent's role, and how do we interface on, on topics related to the community? Um, and so I think going through this is important. It, the purpose of this is for you to, to see, okay, I see how this works. I either am like, okay, this feels good and this feels appropriate to me, or, you know, it might not. Right? It might feel like, um, I understand it, where this decision-making lies, and with policy governance, as we work through it, it may or may not feel good to you, or feel like something you're interested in, but that's precisely why we're walking through the process. Is to kind of engage in learning about how a policy governance board responds. So Michael did, uh, I think, a really good job of kind of summarizing that. So in the other, at the end of this, you'll, you will have experienced, wow, okay, I s- I s- I see this hopefully a little differently.
And I, I, I'm, I'm not advocating anything, I'm just trying to understand.
I don't think you are either.
Into this, um, and I guess that's why I was confused when I read through it prior to the meeting of like, I'm not sure exactly what I'm supposed to be doing here. And I guess it just kind of puts you through the paces of what the procedural check-ins would be, right? What are our relevant policies about this? Do we have any?
Right, and what's, how, how does this work between the board and the CEO in a situation such as this?
So Randy, would, in a situation like this, would the superintendent preemptively cite the policy with decision-making, or is it just catching up after the fact, us trying to justify it by going through to the policies?
Um, so it, it sort of depends on when in the process you were notified of this. Because, because you, the scenario could happen before, during, or after a process. And so the answer to that would be, um, I think dependent on where it is. But, but what, how, how we operate right now with T and G is it's the policy that's being addressed, or the policy covered by any particular agenda item is always listed right on the agenda.
Oh, right, okay.
So it links, um, so if, if, um, no, well, well, we'll see, because this might not even make it on the, on, on an agenda necessarily as a, a decision-making. So let's walk through the process if we can. Okay? So are there any other executive limitations that jump out at you other than two point eight and two point one? You can jump onto three, three if you are to look at the board management delegation.
Yeah, I think there's more. I think there's, there's stuff in this. Um, I, I found stuff under three point three in, um, delegation to the superintendent. Uh, this was like number one, I mean, we, we develop policies instructing superintendent to achieve specified results for specified recipients at a specified cost. I mean, so we could, we don't know any of the details of this scenario, but one could assume that there's probably cost reasons that kindergarten hours would be reduced. And so that's sort of where, if we've boxed you into a corner money-wise, um, that would, that would be where that would fall. And then number three, under that same three point three, number three, if you're interpreting our policies, you're authorized to make these decisions. Jumping out to anybody in three? Um, three point I mean, and again, this is like, if we're blindsided by this, this would matter, but like, under three point four, number two, um, we're supposed to be acquiring monitoring information from the superintendent, so I guess it's a big assumption that this is just, we're just being blindsided. I feel like, because we were just blindsided by this scenario. Where is the financial stuff in here?
That's two point, like, two point six, two point three, two point four. I think two point six is asset protection.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah, three is financial conditions and activities.
So how do I get the draft policies? I, I was pointed to just the, our policy, the Medway School District's policies on the BRSU side, but they're not the same thing as these, I don't think.
I think Celeste can get you that portion of the packet. It's not gonna be super helpful right now.
Right, no, I know. I had asked for it, and she had pointed me to this, but I think I didn't ask for the draft policy. So that's.
So we can have Celeste send them to you.
Okay, I'll, I'll email her, yeah.
Okay, so governance process? Anything in there? The only thing I could come up with is like the governing style about how the board will govern lawfully observing principles of policy governance model with an emphasis on outward vision rather than internal preoccupation. And then strategic leadership more than administrative detail. So as long as we feel that decisions are being made in a forward-thinking way, and that we're, we're focusing our work on the broader, in the broader sense, and not on the nitty-gritty details. From the next part of the question is, according to the board's policies, does this scenario refer to anything that has been delegated to the CEO already?
You know, and, um, so three point oh, the board's sole official connection to the operational organization, its achievements, and the conduct will be through the superintendent.
Right, and we, I mean, the delegate, the three point three is where you're delegated all of these. I mean, we, three point three, like, all of three point three.
If that whole section of three point three is, is where we're giving the authority and, and what the parameters of that authority is.
Right. And this number four, the board makes changes ends and executive limitations policy, thereby shifting the boundary between board and superintendent domains. By doing so, the board changes the latitude of choice given to the superintendent. But as long as any particular delegation is in place, the board will respect and support the superintendent's choices. So that tells me that what should we do, I mean, the, the last line of the scenario, what should the board do? Will you either change your policies in the, in that specific area in ends and executive limitations, or you say, we support you in what you're doing?
What did you just read, Julie?
I read three point three, number four.
Three point three?
Three, number four.
What number four?
I heard a yawn.
Yeah.
In determining whether the superintendent is working within the parameters, I mean, you know, I mean, obviously, it needs to be backed up with why they've limited the hours, like, for budgetary reasons. I mean, if we as a board felt that that wasn't being demonstrated, we would, that's where we would have the right to question that, I guess, right? I mean, you can't just take it at the word. I mean, it has to be shown why it was done, and that has to fit. Know that the, the needs of the students are being met, and that it's being done at the appropriate cost, and that, you know, if, if there was no need that was being shown to cut the hours back, we would have the right to question that, right?
And so if this scenario came up and we said, the board could say, we need some monitoring reports before this goes into effect. Right? We need, we would need to be able to, we would be able to ask you to show us some reports that needs are being met, or costs are too high, or whatever. We could ask, we could demand of you some data.
Um, so it depends on, um, so that depends on the scope of delegation that's been established. So as long as, as long as the superintendent is working within the scope of what has been delegated to them, uh, they can, they can do their job, they can do the work without necessarily needing approval from you. So, so, uh, so, you know, so if the board was concerned that the superintendent was not working within the scope of that, you could request information, uh, to, um, to make sure that exactly what you said, it wouldn't, it would be, um, essentially, and, and part of this is that, is that, is that we would develop a monitoring plan. Um, like, uh, um, sort of how I, like, interpret, how I interpret the policy that I would present to you, independent of a scenario. So I would say, this is my interpretation of this policy, this is what I understand it to mean, and this is how I intend on monitoring performance in this area. That's, that's part of this process that you, we go through together. You would say, either, yeah, I, I, we agree as a board that this is a reasonable interpretation, and we feel fine about how you're proposing to monitor. Or you might turn around and say, you know, we're, we have some questions or concerns around your interpretation, this is how we as a board see it. Um, and this is how we'd like to consider monitoring. And we go back and forth, but eventually, we end up with a policy, and we end up the, the interpretation and the monitoring plan for, for, um, um, many, uh, of these, uh, many of the policies. So in an ideal world, all of that's done, and so we all have a collective understanding of wh- what I would need to do in a situation like this, just to work within the policies, and you would understand what I had the authority to do. We don't have any of that done right now, so it's much more nebulous, and it feels much more open to, like, possible, the possibility of somebody doing something rogue and you having no control over that.
That's, I think that's where all of our angst is coming.
But it, the, the interpretation, but it just takes time. Like, we're in the process of going through that right now with the Conic and Green. Um, we take a policy, we work on the interpretation, how we're gonna monitor it, and then we talk through it.
That's what's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, no, it's just that you, that, that comes after, that becomes as part of the process, and, and really, it's a multi-year process of going through that.
I guess in reading these, I was unclear, it was sort of like I was having this chicken and egg kind of crisis of how, you know, how do you, I, I just, I wasn't connecting the dots in terms of how we would have gotten ourselves into the situation that the scenario begins with. You know, how did we get, as Diane pointed out at the beginning, how did we get to a place where we've just had this significant alteration handed to us, so to speak, without our being aware of it prior to kaboom? You know, this is what's coming down for the kindergarten hours coming, uh, you know, coming up imminently. So in any case, I don't wanna go completely off base here. I just have, I'm having a hard time connecting these dots.
Let's just work through the pro, let's just keep answering the questions.
Okay.
Because hopefully, it will lead us to an end. And it may make sense for the, you know, for us to think about bringing, uh, you know, either Val or Jackie in to talk through some of this now that you've gone through, the work you've gone through and you're, you're finding yourself in this point of what's actually going on here. You're, you've got, we've gone through enough exercises, I think, with hearing from TNG and our, your discussions, you're getting greater understanding of where some of your apprehension lays. So I think, but let's, let's keep going here.
Uh, so 2A, does the scenario suggest CEO is in compliance with a reasonable interpretation of the board's ends and executive limitations policies? I mean, as written, I feel like as written. Then I keep going back to the fact that, like, if you came to us and said, we're cutting kindergarten hours, I would, I would have so many more things to say. Do you wanna move to 2B?
Sure. Yeah.
Okay, does the scenario reflect behavior consistent with the board's governance process and board management delegation policies? I think the really hard part for all of us is accepting the, um, is that we don't like the scenario, right? So, but, but is it consistent with our governance process and board management delegation policies? That specific question, um, I think it, my interpretation is that it is. I mean, our governance process is that we do not make, um, we do, our work does not, is not focused on the administrative or programmatic means of attaining the effects, which is under 4.1, number two.
I think one of the challenges is, you know, is just, as you said, you're getting, everyone's sort of thinking about every, the idea, you know, the, the interpretation or the idea that this just is dropped on you and you're void of any level of context. So, so that's, it's hard for, I think, for probably everybody, including myself, to get past that. Um, cuz you're wondering, was something else violated leading up to this? You know, was there something else that happened leading up to this scenario that wasn't followed? And we don't have that information. So really, the question is, does the superintendent, does the CEO have the authority to do, to come to you and say, I'm, we're reducing hours? In knowing that in real life, it wouldn't happen quite like that.
Well, and I'm even thinking now, you know, one scenario that would make this easier to justify in my mind would be, let's say, some kind of a weather event where we add some sort of a, uh, you know, a flood or a roof blew off, or suddenly money that we thought was there to do this, if we don't do this other thing, we literally don't have a structure for people to go to school then. I don't know. I'm just, I'm just coming up with my little Wizard of Oz ways of making this work in my own head so I can get the questions answered.
I know, yeah, which I, I, I get where you're coming from. But I think if we just specifically, like, if you look at, so the board governance, that's in four. Like, if you look at that, I mean, what is, what is that saying? And is that telling you that the superintendent has the authority to make this decision?
Can I put out another example? And I'm just wondering if it relates. It's obviously in a much less severe way, but I mean, in our actual meeting, we talked about, um, superintendent has, um, the VRSU has decided that any snow days would now be not snow days and it would be remote learning. And I kind of, Diane kind of questioned that, like, that could create a hardship. But it was already decided. It wasn't really up for discussion. So is that, you know, it's obviously less severe than reducing kindergarten hours, but it's still, in principle, similar where this decision's been made. Uh, it, does that relate? Am I not understanding that right or is it similar in, in some ways?
I mean, I, it's, it's scheduling stuff, right? Like, this is scheduling. Who sets the schedule? We don't set the schedule as a board. We don't pick the math program as a board. Uh, you know, we're not, we are not involved in any of the administrative or programmatic means of attaining the effects that we ask for. We ask for effects and then we qualify what they can or cannot do to get these effects. But we don't tell them, well, no, I take that back. We ask, we ask for effects and we tell her what she can't do to achieve them. We don't tell her what she can. We don't tell her how she can schedule. We don't tell her what, um, books or programs to use. We just, we say, this is what we want to achieve. You can't do this, this, or this to get there.
So we have the authority to shape the parameters, but not to make the decisions. Right? We, our authority is making the framework, but not making the decisions.
That's right.
I, from what.
We've made that framework and you've made that a decision, even if we don't agree with it, our hands are somewhat tied. And I'm not saying that in a confrontational way. I'm just, this is an understanding that, I guess that is almost a separation of power. Like, we have the power to formulate the, you know, the parameters and the structure of it, but we don't have the power to say, oh, we don't like that decision or, you know, that's kind of.
That, that's right. And in, in the big scheme of things, it's about, um, ultimately, you as a board, review the, you know, the interpretations and monitoring. And as it relates to ends policies, are we, are we working towards achieving our ends? And that, that then comes back on, you know, the superintendent evaluation process, right? And the, the, um, accountability of the superintendent. That's where, that's where it all comes back. Um, that's how it all kind of loops back around. Because if at the end of the day, you're not, you know, that you have your ends established and you know your goals and priorities as a board, and if you don't feel like you're, I'm achieving those through the actions I'm taking, then, then you, you'll be clear that I'm not taking you in the direction that you wanna go. Which obviously isn't really this, we're getting off a little bit, a little bit more about sort of the process in general. Uh, but there could be certainly some very compelling reason as to why this kindergarten thing came to play, even though on face value, it's startling to everyone, including me. But as Michael pointed out, there are conditions and circumstances that could have led to that decision that could have been a key piece to achieving your ends. Or following, to somebody's point, you know, the, the financial accountability and asset protection that I'm required to do could have led to a number of decisions that were hard to make and that could have been one of them, right? There's like a whole slew of things, um, that I have the authority as a superintendent under policy governance to decisions to make. What, what do we do? What do we not do when we're faced with, uh, untenable conditions or unexpected conditions? And I still need to lead us through that.
But as a board, we would be in a position where we could question you about some of those decisions, right, that you'd made and why they were made.
Sure, and, and, um, you know, you'd, you'd wanna bring it back to the policy and you'd bring it back to the interpretation and monitoring to, to ensure that I was working within what I had the authority to do and not what was in your authority.
So let's say, in this scenario, that you came to us and there was some massive budgetary reason that we needed to save a bunch of money. But then the, this was your, this was your solution, was to cut the number of kindergarten hours. And then the board was able to look at the budget and say, yeah, okay, like, X number of dollars was saved by this decision. But there's this sort of fluffy area that could have saved us X number of dollars. Like, I don't know. I mean, yeah, that sports aren't important, but like, hey, we could have saved 50 grand on sports and instead, we saved 50 grand on early education. We don't, it's not that we're powerless. It's that in that scenario, we would need to adjust our policies to say, um, something about prioritizing early education. Like, we would have to make, we could, we can do something.
Yeah, but it would be, in that scenario, you just laid out, according to policy governance, it, it would be after the fact.
That's, that's.
Or be out of the barn.
That's exactly right.
Yeah. Our hands are tied.
Yeah, and so you would realize, you would realize if we walk through that, if you as a board thought, well, this is not how I wanna operate. I do not want X, Y, or Z types of decisions to be made. I'm not, we are not going to give the superintendent the authority to make, we're gonna, as you said earlier, Julie, we're gonna shift that. You have the authority to do this, but you do not have the authority to do this. And we're shifting that because we as a board disagree with what, with, with, uh, not only that decision, you know, the rationale, or we don't see that it in any way supports our ends policies. And, um, and we wanna revisit that. Um, that's, yeah, that's how, that's how it would work.
But backing out, we're all working on these policies together as a team, the board and the superintendent together, to get to a point where we don't have sort of an adversarial situation. We are getting, we, we're trying to create this positive framework for the decision-making and, and, you know, but to me, that's what we also have to think about is that we're working on this as a team in advance of it, so it doesn't get to a point that we've overlooked something.
Yeah, exa- exactly. And it's, I mean, it's, it's not designed in any way to be adversarial. It's very much a partnership in the, the, this, this, I, I can say in my, you know, just personally, my experience with working through this with Teconic and Green, is that it is a really interesting partnership. It, and it's, it's awesome in many, many ways. I, I, um, I always talk to the executive committee when we're planning and discussing things. I give them, make them up to speed about anything that's, um, that I'm thinking or that I'm doing, um, for discussion so that they're aware of it. Um, and, and it is, it is a relationship that's built on what, what's good for the organization. And the more I understand about their priorities and their goals and their values, I then bring that back to budget development, like, you know, so how does the budget reflect the values and the priorities? And how does the work we're doing reflect your, your goals, your priorities, your values? Because we get to know each other really well. That whole interpretation and monitoring process really builds relationship. It, it's, it's a really dynamic partnership in understanding. And we learn about each other, you know? Ultimately, I feel like my responsibility is to, to understand your needs and you're reflecting your community so that I can lead in a way that supports your values and goals, your community's values and goals. And the whole system is designed to support that. I, I, just for the record, I'm crystal clear that slashing kindergarten in your community would not be a great move aligned with your values and goals, right? Like, so, uh, anyway, just for, just feel like, even though this is not about me, I'm feeling like I need to say that to you.
It's an unlikely scenario that would come up in our case.
It, it is.
Collectively speaking.
I do, I just wanna point out that I have 802. So I don't know if, um, if you guys wanna continue talking about this for a couple more minutes or if we wanna, um, shift to the next thing on the agenda, which was the, um, community engagement piece.
Yeah, I, I think that we just ended on a really good note on the policy governance. I mean, we kind of drifted away from the actual lesson, but I think that was a really good discussion that gave me a better understanding. I mean, I don't know, I, I thought that was a good discussion, so.
My vote for shifting on, I, you know, continue to struggle with the fact that it's suddenly dark at 4:45 in the afternoon.
It's hard.
Which has really been a struggle lately. But in any case, um, yeah, that would be.
Okay. Diane, you ready?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Randy. Uh, so the next part is our community engagement piece, which I'm trying to remember. I think we were supposed to sort of finalize a few questions. Um, and I did have a question. I don't know if Celeste is still on, but maybe we can, I can email her tomorrow. But I was just wondering about our deadlines, cuz we had discussed, um, adding some, putting together a survey that would go out in the school report, the annual report for the schools. And I was hoping, and I don't remember if we discussed this or not, but maybe also in the town reports so that it would kind of get to people regardless of whether or not they pay attention to the school annual report.
I think that's a good idea, cuz I'm all about the communication piece.
Okay.
Perpetual.
And so is your question, Julie, about the timing of that?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna find out, I can find out the Polit Town Report deadline and then if someone can find out. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna find out, I can find out the Polit Town Report deadline, and then if someone can find out Rupert.
Okay.
Michael, right? Michael?
Yeah.
Since Arlene's not here.
Yep.
Thank you, Michael. And then we'll find out from Celeste the timing for the school.
It's gonna be early January.
That's what I'm gonna say. We, ours is always do like the first week in January. Okay. And I think we're in that same general.
Yep.
Okay, so that gives us, um,
I'm finding out the deadline for, with, uh, to submit a questionnaire, so to speak?
Yeah, we were gonna put a small survey in the town report and like a, a link to where they could fill it out electronically, but also like a sheet that if they so choose, they could just, you know, cut it out and mail it into us. That, and then I think we had decided that we wanted really like short short questions and very few questions. So I didn't know if anyone had written down anything.
Dad, um, for you for our graduates to be college and career ready? That's one of the questions that we talked about last time.
Right. So I had written that down too. I had, what does it mean to be ready to leave high school? I thought that was a little more like, I don't know. Maybe it's, maybe it's a little too little.
Too little? What do you mean? That it's too narrow in terms of that scope? I, I kind of like it because we're dealing with our, you know, our, uh, our clientele are bringing us up to that point, so to speak, before they go out into the wider world.
Well, I guess my, my thought on that is, I mean, so when you leave high school, we educate through high school. That's what our system does. So it's important to acknowledge and, and plan for that. So and then my thought was, well, okay, so when you leave high school, what do you need? Like, not everybody leaves high school going, being prepared or willing to go into a four to eight year, you know,
Right.
education. Um, so what about everyone else? So that was sort of why I was thinking just, and we did address that in college or career ready, but it's just sort of like, what do you? I just kind of wanted to get to the point of like, what do you want kids to leave here? Like, what does it mean to be ready to leave high school? But I feel like it could be worded better, I guess, was my point about it being too small. Like, is it, is it? I don't want to eat anybody, but I don't want
Word, maybe you need to add in there, "to be successful." I mean, you could leave high school, you know, you could leave in 11th grade, you know, but
So what does it mean to be ready to be successful after high school?
Yeah, or moving forward, or, you know, I mean, as you say, we want to keep it simple, but to be, um,
To be, to preface the question with the setup, and then that would still be the question, but like, say something like, in light of wanting our graduates to be successful, what, what do you think it means to be able to finish high school or graduate?
Yeah, I get what you mean.
There might be also, um, the possibility of framing a question around, allowing the person answering to come up with, you know, what, are there any particular, uh, skill sets that you think are crucial for success? You know, and let them write them in, you know, math, I don't know, whatever it may be.
Right. Um, my general idea was to have like, three questions and have one of them be specifically about values.
Hmm, good.
One of them be specifically about skills. And then one of them be like, this, this is the other one, which is sort of more about like, what, what does it mean what do we want people leaving our system to look like? But I guess we're covering that in values and skills? I don't know.
If you've got a skill set and you've got values, and they can identify them, then haven't you identified the answer to your question?
I think you're right. So maybe we only need two questions? Or do you think we're missing something?
I think we might be missing something, but I'm not sure. I have to keep about it.
You're partly keeping the questions fairly short and simple because we don't want to lead the person answering like, oh, we want to know what academic qualifications, or we want to know what skills. I mean, don't we want them to kind of let us know? Like, maybe the most important thing to them is that that they're graduating with values such as perseverance and, and you, you know, determination, or maybe for that person answering, they do think that it's computer skills or something, or, so you know, I think, I think the idea of, of, of keeping a question shorter is, is a good one. So we get a wider range of answers.
Right. The, the other thing that I potentially was thinking about was sort of trying to rate how our community feels about, things like, like early ed or expanding pre-K hours, or, or like foreign language skills or thing, other things like that. Like, is, is that where we could come at it with a third question? But I, I like the idea of, you know, what values do you think it's important for graduates to have? And what are the most important skills for graduates to have? That covers so much ground in two questions. I'm kind of lost on the third.
So do we want to ask them? Do you have any other thoughts?
What is the purpose? What is it you are doing this for? Why are you doing this?
I think we want to better understand what our, um, what our employers desire as in terms of outcomes. And that's where I'm a little puzzled as to why we have to keep the questions so completely pared down. Because if we do it that way, then the answers are going to be very broad and general. And my thinking is that we may want to make, have a few more questions. And like Julie suggested a minute ago, make them more about specific things that we want to make get a consensus on. How do you feel about, um, you know, uh, uh, the amount of preschool education that we're offering? I mean, I don't know, I don't even know what, off the top of my head, what those topics may be, but, um, that might help us to fill in more of those blanks more specifically.
Yeah, I was originally thinking that way, Michael, as far as like, what do the employers want? But then I started thinking, I think after the last meeting, this kind of came up. I mean, maybe it's the graduates of Medway that have gone on to college and felt really well-prepared in certain areas, but not others. I'd like to know what they are. Or someone that wasn't going to college, that they feel equipped, you know, going into some kind of trade, you know, should, should there be some kind of better opportunity or more education in, in, in kind of that direction? So it's so hard, it's so comprehensive, but trying to figure out how to get different perspectives from different areas, you know. I mean, I know years ago, when I went off to college, graduating from Granville, I was like, just like in, in deep water that first year, trying to write papers in college, because I hadn't done that much. I was so ill-equipped. So I think you get that kind of feedback, and like, where are we strong and where are we lacking? So, I don't know. It just probably made it more confusing.
No, but I, I think that sort of points toward a few more specific questions along those lines, you know, um, uh, in terms of what we want graduates to actually, you know, um, walk away with, skill set-wise, not just more abstract things like the values, which I'm not, they're very important, but, you know, wha- what else, um, in terms of how it might bear on decisions that we have to make as a board?
And, and so, so are you thinking that you collect this information? And then, um, you, you org- organize it, right? Are you aggregate it, whatever? I don't, I don't know what, we haven't gotten to that part of the discussion. Like, then, well, you've got all this data, who, what are you doing with it? And then, I'm still trying, I think, to play it out in my mind, what your, what your purpose is. Is this, is this, uh, goal development or ends policy development, or is it?
I think it's ends policy development. I think that's what our goal is, is just to try to, to try to think really critically and carefully about what our community wants before we start writing these things on paper, and
Yeah, yeah.
So then, so then if that's what you're thinking, then you'll, you would probably want to consider questions that that cover the ends policy areas, which are academics, transferable skills, and civic ethics. So if, if, if you're, if you're trying to collect information to guide your whole policy development and you're developing ends policies, then I, I would, I would, I guess, encourage you to think about the questions that get you to, to the development of those.
But maybe this survey would slightly change that and add a category or take, or shape a category. So, I mean, to me, that's the importance of it. Yeah, it's, it's a lot. It's a lot, a lot to manage. I was wondering about, now, obviously, not everyone will have access to this, but maybe from an efficiency point of view, if we had an online form on which they could answer the questions from data, data collection, that might, that might be a good way to do it for the majority of the people we're trying to reach, maybe. I don't know, rather than a mailing. Some people would need a mailing, but.
Yeah, I think, I, I like, I think the idea of doing it, having an electronic form is a good one, and putting it in the school and the town reports. And then having this data collection period being, you know, the time that you're essentially align it with when your communities would receive their mailings, open up the other form the same times you're collecting over this three or four week period of time. And, and, and make other, other mechanisms also by which you could collect information.
So, you know, do you break it down by academic skills, values, or do you break it down by more of the groups that would be answering it? You know, do you think about, you know, maybe a question is, you know, what do you feel you should graduate, you know, have preparedness for moving on in higher education? And for, you know, uh, being employable, or for going into a trade? I mean, that's another way to break it down as opposed to.
So, I'm just wondering if that's just like a flip on how we ask the same question, but like, instead of saying what values are important to you, you know, kind of like, what values do you feel our graduates may be lacking? Wha- or what values, um, do you think our schools need to put more emphasis on? It's the same question, but just asked in a different frame.
Well, I would like ask it in a positive way and not ask what they're lack. That's a very big mental call, and I think that's different, but if you're,
Excuse me.
You know, that's, that's one thought. And Scott, just to, um, I've often wondered if we should have, um, not even if it's not a question, but a, a place where if the person that's filling out the form wants to identify themselves as a small business owner, as a farmer, as something that
That's, I was thinking the same.
Where they're coming from, because, you know, the in real estate might say, boy, you really be good with math, and you better be able to be communication, and you better be able to write, where someone else may say, yeah, I have a completely different need, you know, I need you to really be focused on the welding, and I need you to be able to, you know, I think there are different. So if I know who's answering this question without asking them, and they could just give me that, then, then I'm getting information in a different way too, which would help identify. I don't know, it's just a thought.
Yeah, no, I had that same, that, that same thought when I was thinking about it. They'd gone through like, where they identify, kind of what from, from, from where their point of view is coming, you know, is, is
The difference.
Yeah.
I, I, it often makes a difference, because I, I think that I understand that I've changed and evolved as I've grown. And, and so, you know, factors have come to me and, and opened my eyes or made me go, oh, my gosh. So, yeah. I think to be able to say, you know, I'm a former educator, um, or a this or a that, might give somebody, okay, that's how that person, and then you can go back and look and say, well, the business owners and all the different farmers, and they were all thinking the same kinds of skill sets. We could then, you know, look at the data and clump it in several different ways.
Yeah.
Okay, so where are our next? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to mention that there are online, and I, I remember I was looking into this, like, various websites about how to create community surveys. I remember doing this with a theater board, but it would be something that may be advantageous for us to just kind of glimpse into, um, because I know they're out there, you know, like different, um, uh, survey structures to help school boards, et cetera, et cetera, come up with the kinds of questions that we're asking questions about.
A good idea.
I'll, I'll, I'll look around and see if I can't find any, because I, I remember specifically, there were some things around those, you know, just these, this, just this conversation that we're having. But anyways.
So I guess I'm just wondering what our next steps are, because we have to have this, we really need to have questions for, decided on at our next meeting. In order to get them into the reports in time. So, do we want to approach this from?
So Julie, I'd like to say I'd like to see the questions come from you. And, and then you can put them out to us. I don't know, whatever, as long as we follow the right protocols and it's open, and we could say yes or no, or edit, or, and then, um, I don't know, but that's something. Because I do want to keep it kind of small and
Okay. So you want me to type up a document and email? I can distribute it out to you guys, but we can't chat about it.
Right.
Um, but I could certainly come up with, I mean, I'm, I'm hearing an okay on the, the values and the skills being two separate questions. Um, and I just don't know. I guess I'd like a little more help on what the third question should be? Or like
The form, without asking for their name, which you should never do, in my opinion. I would like, oh, identify, maybe that's even before you get to the two questions. Maybe that's not even, maybe it's just, this is what we want. Would you like to tell us, you know, where, you know, whatever, where you're coming from, you know, what? I don't know how to get that, but we
I'm envisioning something where it's like two or three questions, and then a spot where it says, if you could please identify your, um, I don't know how I would put it. I don't know how I would put it, but basically like your position in the community, and then give examples, like, are you a small business owner? Are you a, a, a parent, are you a grandparent, are you a former student in our district? Um, no other, and like, leave a blank for people to fill it in, that kind of thing. Um, but I'm thinking, I'm thinking values, skills, and then maybe, um, like a is there a specific area that you would like our district to focus more on, and then list some examples like early education, pre-K, um, foreign language, just a few, or, and then other, and like, leave a blank spot for them to fill that out. Does that make sense?
Do you think it's important to give people some things to rate, like you were saying, because otherwise, just a blank, open-ended question, they might not be able to generate ideas as much?
Right, so sort of like rank your, rank what values you think.
But Randy, you had mentioned tying this to the, um, ends policy. So then, does that, do we go back to that dispositions, that academic and then social? Do we tie it back to those?
Yeah, it, what you are ultimately wanting to do is take the results of this survey and use them to develop your policies. So even if, you know, I think, I, I think that, that the direction you're going, um, will provide you with information. You know, ends policies aren't typically sort of skill-based, we want, you know, uh, as far as like acad- traditional academic content. It tends to be more broad than that. I, I think that my, my only thought based on, on what was just shared is that if you are going to generate a list and ask them to identify sort of their top priorities, I would encourage you to be really thoughtful as a board about what you put on those li- that list. Because if you're going to be offering them something, you'll want to make sure that it's reflecting things considered to be, uh, something you're curious about, because you will, they will morph to your ideas versus when you're open-ended, you're completely getting their authentic ideas.
Right. Yeah, for sure.
So you want to be careful if you're doing that, that you've taken time as a board to determine what should be on that list and why, or why are we putting these on the list? You'd have a purpose for that.
Okay. So if I did another, like, Google Doc, or I can just distribute out to people, but I can, I could collect feedback to my questions individually from board members, right, I just can't do a respond all, no one can hit respond all.
Right, and you don't want to kind of get in too much of a dialogue with even a board member about it. But if you gave ideas, they gave you a response, you then took those responses and kind of moved it forward for the board meeting. That's totally fine.
Okay, okay. I can do that then, and then we'll finalize, we'll, we'll set aside a chunk of time to Wordsmith in December.
Okay.
Is everyone ready to move on from that then?
Please.
Okay. Um, board updates. Okay, our next meeting is December 14th at 6:30. Same time, same place, in your living room. Couple minutes for board self-evaluation.
Well, I think our involvement was good. I think it was high, it certainly wasn't low.
Okay. Um, I think our agenda was followed well.
Mm-hmm.
And.
Annual work plan, I think we're on track.
Yeah, that got skipped, too. Can we, um, get that in our next agenda so that we?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm gonna say yes to everything on number four, because we had our policy governance. I do think that that sort of helps us to these practices, to.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna slightly disagree, Julie, and say that I really, you know, I, unless you can explain to me the community engagement, I think we're trying to figure out how to engage the community. Um, but I, I don't know. I don't know, um, so that's my, that's, I guess that's my, my thing is, is, you know, so, anyway. I, I just don't know if it's an absolute yes for me on that one.
That you don't think we're spending sufficient time on community engagement, because you don't, because we don't know what, how we're doing it yet?
Well. Yeah, I, yes, maybe that's it, maybe, maybe I feel like, um, you know, um, you know, we're doing, doing a lot of talking. I don't know if we're getting the word out there well enough, this is what we're doing, I, I don't know, but I, I guess I just feel like you know, doing to let them know what it is we're talking about, and um, I know we're sending the agenda out, um, so I don't know, I, I just, you know.
Yeah, do you think? I'm still bothered by the fact that nobody comes to these meetings.
Well, I think right now, getting anybody to any of the meetings is really hard with Zoom. Um, I don't think.
People attend the Polit Select Board meetings. I just, and no one came when it was in person, I just, it, I, I don't know, it saddens me that they're just that's why I've wanted so much to focus on community engagement this year, because it just isn't there for us.
Maybe that's one of your questions.
We, we could potentially
That's good.
Things out there on the front porch forum, or perhaps extend the, um, the reach of our, uh, notifications to the community, um, that we are having these meetings and what the date is, that might be a way of getting a little bit more, uh, about community engagement. You know, I know a lot of people look at that front porch forum, I don't know if there's some, if any questions of legality around this. I'm not like a Facebook person, but I don't, I don't know if that might be some venue to get more people inve- engaged in paying attention to what we're doing once a month?
Yeah, maybe.
And Bob's writing down, Bob's good at this, he can help with that.
But I can, I can definitely post it on the Meadowway Community School Facebook page, I don't mind doing that. When the agenda goes out, I could just put it on there, take a picture and post it.
Okay.
That seems like a good, a good way, at least, to get out there to parents that, hey, we're here and we're meeting on the 9th of November.
Hmm.
Right.
I also.
Take your shoes off.
Deb Hawkins also puts it out, um, the agenda out to her community, which I think is helpful, um, but I'm not sure if there's a place in Rupert that has a, um, monthly email, we could maybe do something with that in Rupert.
Not that I'm aware of, other than the front porch forum, you know, where it, uh, but we could check with Andy, the town clerk, um. Yeah.
Okay. Consent agenda?
Yes.
Something that went well tonight?
I think that we listen, I think we really try hard to listen, so I, I feel as though my thoughts and concerns or my ideas are being at least listened to, that I'm being heard, so I appreciate that as being the person who's kind of out there, it appears to be.
I, I agree, I do, I, I very much feel I feel that we hear each other, and I feel that we, um, are respectful enough that it makes us think, too, we don't just listen, but we think afterwards. I, I like that. Any concerns with tonight's meeting? No. Um, I just, maybe we can, can, does Arlene respond to emails if we email her? I just want to make sure she's okay.
Uh, you know, I'll, I'll get ahold of Arlene, I'll, I'll make a point of doing that tomorrow. And find out what's I thought of it today, and I just did not get to it, but I'll write it down here in addition to finding out about the town report deadline.
Okay.
What's going on that way? And I just want to quickly jump in with one quick thing, I just very quickly went to, you know, uh, surveys, and there's a website that jumped up called School Perceptions: Measuring What Matters, and, uh, granted that I think they sell various models of surveys, et cetera, but it would be an excellent just place from a very quick glance just now, that might be a really useful thing for us to just mine a little bit for ideas and approaches. School Perceptions is this, uh, website, community.com, community surveys.
Okay.
Anyway, just wanted to check that.
Thank you. Okay, um. How could we improve this meeting?
Have it start at 6:30 in the morning.
I hear you.
At least.
Okay, um, public comment?
Celeste, is there any, are there any comments on YouTube?
None, there's only one person watching. And it might be.
It might be you, thank you. Thanks for watching, Celeste.
Okay, um, hearing no public comment, um, I will call, meeting adjourned at 8:37.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thanks, everyone.
Yeah. Everybody, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, YouTube.